Good evening. At this time, I would like to call to order the August 6, 2024 Stanley County Board of Education meeting. Welcome to those of you in attendance and to those of you watching live stream. We appreciate you being here and your support of Stanley County Schools. I will now turn it over to Mr. Lisk for the invocation and pledge.
Let us power heads. Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us together tonight. We pray for your strength and your wisdom, that we make the best decisions and the right decisions on behalf of our students, our families, and our county. In your name we pray, amen. Let's stand for the pledge.
I plead the conditions. To the light of the United States of America, into your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include inclement weather discussion to be added as Agenda Item B.
I move we amend the agenda.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next up on our agenda is closed session. Make a motion that we go into closed session for Personnel Matters in C. General Statute 143-318.11A6, Student Matters in C. General Statute 143-318.11A1, and Attorney Client Matters in C. General Statute 143-318.11A3.
Maybe we go into closed session.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? We are now in closed session. All right, I'm going to call us back into open session at this time, and I am going to, since we amended the agenda, I'm now going to turn it over to Dr. Dennis.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I just want to make you, and the public, I want to make you aware of something. As you all know, was hurricane, now tropical storm Debbie is going to be moving through our region. It looks like, speaking with emergency management, we're going to have a significant rain event, which I'm being told as of today is supposed to produce significant flooding. And the rain will start, I guess, really getting heavy on Wednesday and Thursday and Friday, and I know a lot of you already seen what the meteorologists on television are saying, but this also coincides with the start of school. And that's a little different than when you're in the middle of school, because we'll start school on one day if we couldn't have it, if the forecast does pan out, it's not looking favorable to have school. And I have been advised by emergency management that Thursday afternoon, we are looking at some significant flooding across the county. And for those of you I know who live in this county, you know where the areas are, you know where the low water bridges are, you know where the rivers are, and you know the areas even in town here that are tend to flood and/or they retain standing water for quite a while. Having said all that, the way, right now, we're still using Power School and the way when we start school, if we were starting on Thursday with the calendar way it is and not have school, I spoke to Student Information Services, and that's a significant issue with how they report students, absences, start of school, all those things. And they would have to call DPI and work through a lot of things to work that out. So the easiest way to do this, to keep it easier on student information systems and just to make everything cleaner, would be that if we were to not have school on Thursday or Friday, then just start the school year on Monday, and add two optional workdays for teachers, and we'd figure out what that will look like. So I spoke with legal, and essentially what I have is I have a motion. And this motion, if you were to, if you were to vote it in, would allow that the calendar automatically reset, or default, I should say, to begin school on August 12th, which is that next Monday, and make these two Thursday and Friday days that were to be school days, workdays. Now, one thing I do want you to keep in consideration is even though everything's not coming until late Thursday, and it's a possibility right now that I could possibly have a half day on Thursday, then you're looking at kids, especially kindergarteners who are on staggered entry, and you're looking at the, well, I guess, you know, what you're putting the public through as far as having to get off of work just so the kids could go to school for a few hours. It really, to me, logistically doesn't make sense, and it doesn't help our families out, it doesn't help our kids out. So if we were to have to call school in those two days, it's just cleaner to begin the school calendar the next day. I, as the superintendent, cannot amend the school calendar. The Board of Education on the vote would need to vote to amend the school calendar. So we have drafted something that, a motion that I would like you to consider. Do you have any questions?
I move the following. If inclement weather prevents the opening of a school on Thursday, August 8th, then the school calendar is automatically amended by making August 8th and August 9th optional teacher workdays, and the first school day for students will be Monday, August 12th.
See, that comes in a form of a motion already from you?
Well, it's a draft, it's a draft emotion. Yes, ma'am.
So you need a second for that?
Yes.
Okay, a second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, this has passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is public participation at board meetings and public comment. I do not believe we had anybody sign up tonight, so we will move along to the next part, which is the consent agenda. I have June 25, 2024 special call meeting and July 11, 2024 special call meeting on the consent agenda tonight. Those have been available to you, board members and board docs. I will now entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda is CEP meals, and you have a document in there, and I will ask Dr. Dennis for his.
Yeah, I just wanted to beg this real quick. This is the image we've been putting on social media, and there's another image as well. And essentially, we had CEP for our elementary last year, now all students have CEP. We had a phone call go out Monday about this, and we're just trying to raise awareness. I know that I've been communicating with BJ Dry at SNAP, and hopefully they'll have something, yeah, good, good. So they'll have something out soon as well, and I appreciate y'all doing that. And just want to encourage all parents, we need the participation, and we want to make sure that all our kids have two meals a day when they go to school, so Monday through Friday, they can count on two meals a day, and they don't have to worry about meal debt. And hopefully this eases the burden on working families, especially ones who might not, you know, have, who might have to live paycheck to paycheck. Now you can use some of that money to do other things and not worrying about have to feed your kids during the day.
And Dr. Dennis, I know I had some board members that had some questions, so I'll just sort of open it up for discussion at this point.
I know, I have a question about it. I remember when we approved it, that, you know, we approved and then it was up to the county office and our, our schools, our principals to initiate this and to make it happen. Can you allude to how this is going to work in our schools? Like, is every child going to be, when they go into the cafeteria, are they automatically going to go through that lunch line even though they have brought a?
That's a good question. I know exactly what you're asking. So what I told our principals and our administration at the summer retreat is that if you have students need to go through, and if students have lunchboxes, ask them to put the lunchbox down, send them through, so even if they just get one item, then they're helping with the participation rate. So they were told that in our summer leadership.
And how does that work with the breakfast?
Breakfast is tricky, and I can't really tell you how it works for every single school. We could talk offline about that, because different schools have different means for why, well, does the child go by the cafeteria when they enter school? Where do they enter school and things like that? And then I know some in the past had had stuff brought to the classroom, so I think that's going to look different at each individual school, but I could, I could get that information.
Well, and I would just ask that, maybe we can talk to Mike Lambert and ask our bus drivers to announce that in the mornings before the kids get off the bus, make sure you go by and get your breakfast, you don't have to pay for it. You know, it's something you could take with you to your classroom, that kind of thing. And then I wanted to also just reiterate that our cafeteria staff are allotted hours by how many meals we feed. So if we're short a worker and we feed 50, 60 more kids at that school each day, that may make up those hours, and it would make life easier on our child nutrition department too. So it not only gives our kids hot meals twice a day, I know costs to parents, but it also helps our employment situation and making, you know, that more stable. So if we could just stress that to our staff, there's multiple reasons for implementing this program, but I'm super excited that we're going to have two hot meal options for our kids each day, every school, and I think a lot of people are. I just want to make sure that we're marketing and pushing it so that we don't start off behind with not enough participation.
And I'm excited about it too, and I think every, you know, our nutrition department here, you, Dr. Dennis, everybody that's our principals pushing this out. Could we get an update, like at our next board meeting possibly, with how many, how many students took advantage of the free, free breakfast and the free, the free lunch? Could we, could we get some kind of something to, you know?
I know they can give me, because I asked for it the other day for the year, but I know they can give me the number of meals served for breakfast and lunch, so they can produce that.
And we can even have that per, like, per school, break down per school?
I would think so.
That'd be great.
I'm pretty sure they have to keep up with that each day, so I made a note there for that. Any other questions that any board members on the CEP program or meals? I will just encourage all of the folks listening out there, send your kids through the lunch line twice a day, let them get a breakfast and a lunch. All right? Next on our agenda, we have board member training credit. So there are two documents in there. We have a board member that has taken some training, and we just need to approve, or I would like for us to approve these credits so that Ms. Gibson can get the credit for the classes that she took. Oh, Ms. Watson, sorry, sorry. So I would just ask you guys to take a look at that document if you haven't, and I will have to have like a formal motion for that. Have a motion? And a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Hope they can now add that on to their training. Next, we have committee reports. I'll start with facilities, Ms. Robin Whitaker.
We have not had a meeting this past month, but we do have one scheduled for the 28th. Candy seems to be coming along. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to go out there and see what they're doing, but there was a lot of fenced-in area, and if you went a couple months ago, you might have panicked like Ms. Gibson did, because they had the whole sidewalk and everything tore up at the front, and we were trying to figure out how they would ever get that ready for school to start, but the fencing has now been moved, and it's only around the construction area, and the front of the school is put back like it's supposed to be, and they are ready for students. So the fittings have been poured and for the new addition, and we are moving along. They are a little behind schedule due to some things that have occurred, but hopefully we will be able to catch some of that time up, and it'll be opening on schedule.
Next, I have finance with Mr. Lisk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The finance committee met on August 1st, and we've got two motions coming out. I'll explain both to the board. If you've had a chance to look at the documents within board docs, part of the reason, main reason that the committee had to meet was to discuss the commissioner-approved budget and how that was going to affect the system per, relative to the requests that we made. So part of that first document we looked at, we asked for $22.7 million in local expense, which included a lot of curriculum initiatives for our high-need schools. We really addressed a lot of the needs that we felt we had in the system and took us to a funding level in the 50s ranking out of 115 districts, and we're competitive with other districts our size and around us. And of course, the state government ranks us at our ability in the county to fund at 59. You'll see that part of that, and just reminding you, part of that request was to implement the updated classified pay scale that was a mandate from the state. They gave, DPI gave us another year this last fiscal year to adopt a pay scale for the non-certified employees. It's similar to the Office of State Personnel Pay Scale, and that set minimum and maximums, and it allowed someone to have an increase every year versus working 10 to 20 years in the same role, or maybe when the, not getting a raise, or having a manager getting paid the same as a new employee, if you remember back from the minimum wage increases that we had two years in a row. So that's estimated to cost the county about $1.2 million. The commissioner-approved budget allocated about 900,000 additional dollars, so not quite to cover that, and the committee had to meet to understand where the cuts are going to come, because we've got to not only meet that mandate, but we don't get to fund those initiatives, and there could be possible cuts within the county due to that lower funding amount. So I've asked, and the committee had asked, the superintendent and the chief financial officer to take that same document that you're looking at. It's an itemized budget request, and we want the public to see what the system won't get this year, and where we're going to have to allocate the proceeds that we got. On a more positive note, the commissioners did give an extra $600,000 in a teacher supplement grant. That, if you look at the last document, which is a supplement increase, reminding you again that we requested to take our supplement from a current 5% local supplement paid by the county to certified teachers to 8%. The commissioners gave us an extra $600,000, which put it at a rounded $1 million combined with some of the money that we had, but the increase will allow us to go to a rounded 6% number. And the commissioners have mandated, as per their general statute or per a general statute, that it must be used for that. So we will certainly allocate that additional monies to the teacher supplements. And so that'll be the first motion coming out, is that we increase the teacher supplement from 5% to 6% per the funding in that general statute of the commissioner board. The second is going to be the committee approved unanimously to the motion to approve the updated classified pay scale. That's a mouthful, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to field them before we.
And since that's coming out of committee, I just need a second for that. Do you want to state it again? Since it come out of committee, that's technically the motion.
We got two motions coming out of committee. The first was to increase the teacher supplement to 6%, allocating the monies out of our local expense and the increase in commissioner funding specifically for that. The second motion was to approve the classified pay scale. Both of those motions have been approved out of committee.
So I'll entertain a second on the 6% supplement increase. Have a second from Ms. Whitaker? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. And then the second one, your second motion?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Thank you. Is that all you have, Mr. Lisk?
Yes, I.
Okay. Next up, I have been.
I've got a question.
Sorry.
Mr. Lisk, on the, you said the cuts. What did we have to cut?
Well, we're, we're waiting to see, so if you look at that first document, and it shows the email from the county manager, it shows year-over-year of the last four fiscal years of between current expense, capital outlay, Article 44 sales tax, and the teacher supplement. Of course, capital outlay monies have to be used for anything that has an asset tag, buildings, computers, things like that. Teacher supplement has to be used for teacher supplement. That does not cover all of the 6% that we pay. We've previously been at $375,000 and $400,000, and they provided by the commissioners specifically for that, and they've now given us a million, but that doesn't cover the full extent. Just to go from five to six is another half a million dollars roughly estimated. So if you further look down in that document a few pages, you'll see the two or three-page budget request that we gave to the public and to the commissioners that itemizes out the $23 million or $22.7 million that we asked for out of local expense. So these are things like extra staffing at some of our hard-to-staff schools. This is for hiring some advanced teachers, providing more advanced and other types of curriculum opportunities across the county, just, just to name a few. That funding put us at in the mid-50s on an estimate per people based on how the state ranks. We're currently 103 or 107 out of 115 districts, but our county has the ability to fund at 59. The other part of that document was the capital outlay, which was, we asked about $9.1 million and received about $4.1 million. So the all-in increase year-over-year in monies, the local expenses, monies that we have the flexibility, it's non-restricted, we can put it where our needs are for the system. So we got $900,000 extra, but just one itemized expense alone to adopt the mandate of the state of the Office of State Personnel Pay Scale is roughly 1.2 million. So the increase alone in the, the local unrestricted expense funding does not cover the one large expense coming into our system. So it's like your expenses went up greater than your revenue. So that's a $300,000 deficit, meaning that we not only can't fund any of the other initiatives that the board asked for, we're going to have to look at ways that, that the administration's going to have to look at ways that they can use those lower funding amounts and stretch it even thinner than it already is. So I don't know that there's going to be a cut, but we did ask, if you look, and it's the same first document, and it will be page, starting on page three, so three, four, five, and six, ending, the last four of those documents, you see a line item. The first line item being central office, teacher positions locally paid, a lot of personnel, the classified pay scale, the teacher supplements, and then we go into some of the curriculum things, school supplies, some more furniture and equipment, and capital outlay, but we itemized out everything. And so instead of, call it 32 million, we've got 20 million. So there's $12 million worth of things that won't get funded on there. And with higher expenses than we had last year and not enough revenue to meet those expenses, there's possibly, the administration will have to make cuts. And so our committee has asked for this same line item sheet to come back and draw a line through what can't be funded, or what will have a reduced funding amount relative to the cost today. But you've got $14.6 million plus the 8.75 and Article 44 sales tax. That's unrestricted to where they can use it to meet the needs to rest of it. It's teacher supplement and capital outlay, and it's restricted to those items.
And I hate to see that, because one of those things on there is our new teacher academy, that, or teacher training. And I was in a school today, and I know that the new faces in there were quite, quite evident, and I know we have a lot of new, new staff and retain and recruit. It's something we've had.
Curriculum instructional support initiative, we requested $750,000 for. We requested, where's our hard-to-staff incentive bonuses, roughly 836. Secondary instructional coaches, 400,000. The teacher academy, 100,000. The scholarship program, where's the, advanced academic teachers, 400,000. So all of these were helping us to compete, not only in, in someone wanting to go to college, but providing other ways that we can have a more advanced and higher-level curriculum throughout our schools, and supporting and having the personnel that it takes to, to get there.
Yeah.
In a school choice environment that North Carolina now is, it is of the committee's opinion that this is what we need, and the board's opinion, what we needed to compete.
It was evident today at open house that there were a lot of faces that I had not seen before, and that was just at one school. So, you know, I just, I hate to hear that, because we know that statewide, I would venture to say multi-statewide, retain and recruit is an issue we, we hear, and to not be able, I'm sure some of those things are going to get scratched through, so.
And we're thankful for the, you know.
Oh, yes, I agree.
Committee was thankful for the teacher supplement. I'm sure that the board is.
That will help.
We're making a lot of progress there, but, but we also have a lot of areas that, it's, it's my personal opinion that we need to catch up on.
Anything else from any other board member? Okay, thank you, Mr. Lisk. Oh, no, go ahead.
I just, thank you for explaining all of that. I think the fact of knowing that your committee or our county office will begin to look at what, what are we going to scratch through, that's, can no longer be a priority item. And when we start looking at things that affects the students and the learning and what they need in the classroom, then when we have to start making cuts and scratching things there, then in my opinion, we are no longer being a progressive county, we're going backwards. And I, why would we want to go backwards in instruction and in what we offer to our students? So this is, this is hard to look at, and it's hard to take in that some of these things we will have to scratch off, and they will, we will not be able to fund them. And if it affects our students, then that's our job, is to provide the best education possible for our students. So I'll advocate for our students all day long.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Next, I have instructional with Ms. Gibson.
No report, however, I do think, Mr. Palmer, that we are trying to plan a meeting, possibly maybe next week, if that can work out for our instructional committee. And thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Okay, I have personnel with Dr. Lefler.
We have not had a meeting, but we did have a report tonight that I've been asking for, for a while, by Ms. Lydia Hedrick. She's. She's our new HR person, and she seems to be doing an excellent job. It just tells us where we have the deficiency in our teachers and teacher assistants and bus drivers and such as that. And it looks like we're probably in a little bit better shape than we were last year, but we still don't have everything filled. But they're working hard on trying to recruit some people and get people's paperwork done so they can work this year. But thanks a lot for that report. We appreciate it.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Hedrick. I think tonight was the first time I've gotten to see you since I've been on a little medical leave myself, so welcome, and we appreciate you. Next I have policy with Ms. Watson.
I have no report, but we're going to be meeting very, very soon.
Thank you. And safety and security with Mr. Sorenson.
We haven't, we haven't met, I haven't reported on that, but that's what people down in the county know, that there are constantly being upgrades and changes made to our security system and our security plan. We can't talk about it, because that's what security is.
Thank you. Up next on our agenda tonight is curriculum instruction and the consolidated federal program plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, meeting members of the board. I'll bring to you tonight an item for action. We bring this every year to your attention so that you can vote for us to be able to seek these funds and move forward with a plan. Nancy Haley works very hard through the year, but then definitely in the summer, meeting with individual principals and school improvement teams and assistant principals, curriculum coaches, just to get feedback on last year's plan and then figure out what school needs are in order to move forward. So what we have for you tonight in the consolidated federal programs plan is Title 1, 2, 3, and 4. She has put together a summary for you, just so that you can kind of see an idea of what each of those programs is about, but then also what we helped to fund throughout the school district with this funding. So our overall goals for our federal programs, goal one is that we have schools that meet or exceed growth in English language arts or reading, and we obtain school performance grades of at least B. Same thing for goal two, but with math, meeting or exceeding expected growth and hitting that target of at least a school performance grade of B. And goal three, we are striving to retain greater than 85% of our beginning teachers that are in our schools. I'll tell you, the last year this goal was 80%, and because we met that goal and passed that goal, we bumped it up a little bit this year, hoping that we can hold on to even more moving into next school year. Title 1, Part A, that's probably the most common federal program that we have in the district. Most of our federal programming dollars go directly into our schools, supporting either teacher salaries, teacher assistant salaries, tutor salaries, or opening up for schools to have additional instructional resources. We also support parent and family engagement, and making sure that we have those nights that parents are coming in and learning more about what's going on in schools. And we do have parent family engagement leads at each of our Title 1 schools that help coordinate those events and receive a stipend for that as well. Title 2 really goes towards supporting effective instruction. A lot of that, we think about professional development. So going back to retaining and keeping those beginning teachers with us, having a program for our beginning teachers that lasts throughout the three years that they are considered beginning teachers in the state of North Carolina, also employing Debbie Rolls as our beginning teacher coordinator to support them in their classrooms as they move forward in those three years. She also works to support recruitment efforts and bringing quality instructors to Stanley County schools. We work with professional development for both teachers and for administrators, and look for opportunities for those to obtain even more leadership opportunities and how they can develop themselves as leaders. We're able to pay for substitutes when teachers are at professional development, so that the schools are not having to incur that cost. We have mentors for our beginning teachers and even lead mentors at each of our schools that support beginning teachers along the way that receive stipends. We have been looking at our data and noticed that one of the needs that we have is for secondary math, middle school, and high school. So we are hoping to put some supports in place to support sixth, seventh, eighth grade math, even as they move into Math 1, and helping to increase those scores. We provide reimbursement for teachers who go back and get additional certification onto their current certifications, where we may need a teacher who has typically taught math to maybe teach math and science this year. We have a need for the AIG add-on somewhere along the way, so we can pay for that licensure and the add-on there. We want to continue with our implementation of the AVID program in our middle schools and high schools. And something else on top of beginning teachers, there's a lot of weight on beginning principals, and the first time that they are stepping into those shoes. So we are starting a mentor program to support those principals as they're in their first three years, or first two years of the principalship as well. Title 3 works with English language learners. We cannot pay for additional ESL teachers out of Title 3, but we can find programs that supplement above and beyond what we give as just that baseline with ESL support for our students. So we do look for materials and resources that can support them, but then also where we can provide additional teacher assistance to help where some of those caseloads may be a little larger in some of our schools. And finally, Title 4 focuses on three areas, well-rounded, safe and healthy students, and the effective use of technology. This one's a little different. It gives us percentages within the budget that have to go towards each of those items there, each of those three items. We use the funding to support our dual-language program at Indy. We are looking to boost our fine arts programs in high schools. We know that COVID came along and stopped a lot of the singing in the band, just because we weren't able to do that, and we're trying to get some energy back behind that and support not just getting students there, but supporting teachers in building those programs, and hopefully having a coach that can help support those teachers on the backside as well as in the classroom. Also, our second-grade students take place in, or take part in the Learn to Swim program with the YMCA, and then we are always looking for ways that we can provide professional development to teachers for student engagement with the use of technology and supporting literacy. So those are our plans for our consolidated federal programs, Titles 1, 2, 3, and 4. Just looking for action to move forward, to seek these funds, to be able to do those things.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. If there are no other questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the consolidated federal program plan as presented.
I move to approve the consolidated federal program plan as presented.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, I have auxiliary services, and I believe that Mr. Benton's going to come up and speak to us about a couple of things on here. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, board. Just want to speak with you real briefly on a couple items that we have for, informative wise on number one agenda is West Stanley High School roof. There's some issues going on on the gymnasium as well as the admin office. I just want to bring to your attention that we have got an engineering firm to look at that. They conducted some tests today on it, and we're going to hopefully be able to bring to you next month a bid to approve and move forward with it. That's our whole plan or our objective. They should be done with the design in about two weeks, and then we'll bid it, and hopefully we'll be able to hit September's board meeting. If not, then we'll have to push it to October, just to let y'all know. But also, item number two, does anybody got any questions?
I was just going to say, with Debbie coming, are we okay to wait till next month? I mean, or?
We'll do the best we can.
Okay.
There's going to be some issues that we'll just have to address, and we'll do our best as a maintenance department to handle it.
I want to say that Keith and his team have done a great job. They've been up on top of all our roofs, and they've checked our drains, and they've looked at everything, and there's a plan in place for some of these schools that we know have some trouble spots, so they've been, they've been on top of it.
Yes, sir.
Debbie's not making our life very easy right now.
No, ma'am, they are not. But item two, you see North Stanley Middle School's boilers. So just, just for informational purposes, we've had some issues with the boilers there, both of them. Those issues have been addressed over time, and they have reached their life. And so I'm bringing to you tonight for a vote for your approval, for us to use Garmin Mechanical services at a base bid of $156,960 to replace the boilers. That will be a 10-week project from the time we tell them to go. They'll have to order the boilers, get them here, and then they'll install them. It will push us close to cooling season, just for your information. And what we'll do is we'll stage it where we'll have one down at a time and try to get the other one back up online, the new one, and then we'll start taking the other one out. That's going, the approach we're going to take with it. So that's going to put us close to the end of October, being able to finish, and we know how that's going to be. If we don't do it, then we won't be able to have heat for the building, bottom line. So there's three competitive bids on there, and I bring for a motion for y'all to accept Garmin's bid at $156,960.
Okay, I want to entertain a motion to accept the recommended bid from Garmin Mechanical.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Why would that bid be so much less than the others? I mean, that's a pretty significant difference.
It's a pretty good, it's a pretty good discount on the bid, I agree. They, they had a spec that they had to go buy, and all three of them had to meet it. Garmin just come up with the, with the better bid. I'm going to say because of the distance of the guys driving potentially, maybe, I don't know.
I move to approve the recommended bid of Garmin Mechanical for North Stanley Middle School boiler replacement.
I have a motion and multiple seconds. I have a couple of questions, so you guys. Okay. All in favor? Or any discussion? Any discussion, sorry?
Yes, sir.
Sorry for my ignorance.
You're fine.
What's the difference in the base bid and the alternate bid? Is that just two different types of jobs we could go down?
Correct. So we took a base bid of a cast iron sectional boiler that is in place right now. That's the most, majority of what districts-wide, statewide, they put in. They're very reliable. And then we had a copper fin boiler for alternate one. That was the fastest to get. They're readily available. So we took the alternate bid and put it in as a copper fin, because we knew we could get it very fast. But then we found out that we could get the sectional boiler in the same amount of time. That's what we would prefer to put in our buildings, would be the cast iron sectional.
And that's just for noise and quality?
Quality, longevity, they last longer. Copper fin boilers are great in their, in their application. Just it's, the cast iron sectionals have been a proven for generations, that they operate for a very long time.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry about that. I thought when you said, "Go ahead," you meant, you have a point.
Yes, sir.
Real quick, you say the boilers are basically aged out at North Stanley?
Yes, sir.
At the middle school?
Yes, sir.
And four middle schools were built about the same time. Could we expect the other three to roll in a similar fashion in the next year or two?
We don't foresee that. Our boilers get inspected every year by the Department of Labor, North Carolina Department of Labor, and they seem to be in good shape. The North Carolina, they provide us a report every year when they do these inspections. At the time that North Stanley was inspected, they deemed that it needed to be replaced. And there's been steps taken to try to remediate the issues that's been going on with them, and they helped, but they just prolonged to get us more life out of them at the time. So we don't anticipate the other middle schools, as of right now, having to be replaced.
Correct me if I'm wrong too, but it looks like that when those boilers are set, there might have been some issue at the time, and that's what's caused the premature need to replace these boilers.
Correct. They're set in sections. They're big cast iron round tubes, and they sit them, and then they wrap them with a fire retardant in between them. And these, this boiler here at North Stanley Middle, the sections had been replaced previously to try not go, to not, try not to have to do this step. But they were, I mean, they were successful, and they've ran their course of their fix, pretty much.
That was sort of going to be my follow-up question as to why one was not working and the other seemed to be okay, but I think, I think you kind of answered that. So any other questions?
I know it's hard to predict, but when you say the life of that, that should be longer, what, just prediction, what should we be looking at there?
Most of the time, these cast iron sectional boilers, from the little bit that I do know about them, from what I get from my guys, because they, they're very educated, they should last you 40, 50 years. This, this boiler here, like Dr. Dennis referred to, at some time, probably when it was installed, there could have been, it got twisted in the wrong direction in delivery, it set off the trailer roof, and they tried to fix it over time. It's just shortened its life tremendous. But they should last 40 to 50 years.
I could say that's a good thing, because at the rate we're going building schools, we're going to need for it to last that long.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Now I want to entertain a motion to accept the bid for Garmin Mechanical as presented. Oh, I'm sorry, I had a motion in a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, this is fast.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benton. Next up, we have school fees. Dr. Dennis?
By law, every year, at the beginning of school, the Board of Education has to accept, or you have to vote on and approve, I should say, the school fees for the different schools. So we have these listed out to the best of our ability. There's always some other fees that may come up. These are the ones that are standing fees that reoccur yearly, so they're there for you to view, and if you have any questions, let me know, please. Try to answer them to the best of my ability.
I see there's like, there's a sort of a big discrepancy as far as senior fees. I'm going to assume that that's because some of those senior fees probably include cats' counts, diplomas, where maybe some of the others do not?
Yeah, that's a good question, and you may see some other fees from even some different organizations that may be larger, and that's because they, they probably do more, they probably go more places, and there's some other things that they incorporate into their fees. And the same thing, like with the senior fees, yes, there's probably more materials in there, there may be a trip or some extra stuff, so that's a good point. That's what would cause a fee at one school to maybe differ than a fee at another school.
Any other board members have any questions about the school fees?
Dr. Dennis, do we get these fees from every school? Like, you know, it seems like some we're not even seeing anything or much at all. I mean, does everyone turn everything in?
So what we do is we send the sheet out to the principals, and they say, "You have to have your fees approved before you can charge your fees." And it's up to the principal of the school to put the fees down that they're going to charge. At least the reoccurring fees, they know they're going to charge every year. There might be a, they might come up later and have a field trip or something that we didn't approve the fee for, because they didn't know the thing at the time, but like we said, we told them in summer leadership, we're sending out this document, and you have to put your standing fees there, so if they don't get their fees approved, that's going to be on them.
Does each school charge for damaged Chromebooks?
They should. Yes, through technology, someone had to put it on there.
And I assume that those, those fees will come back to?
And that's a district fee, that's not a school-level fee. So I know some of them got a little comprehensive and put stuff on there, but, you know, y'all approved those fees, like for the technology and for all that a long time ago as a part of technology.
And those, that, those fees at the end of the year actually come back?
Yeah, they don't stay at the school. That's a good point, yeah. So those district fees, they come back to pay for the offset of the Chromebooks. Yeah, they don't stay at the school. That's a good point, yeah. So those district fees, they come back to pay for the, offset the chrome books.
I'm in board members, this is an actual, uh, an action item. I will need a motion to approve the presented school fees for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
I make a motion to approve.
A motion in a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, this is passed. Then, next we have the physical monitoring site visit report.
All right, so it's fine. So what you have is, uh, we've got this document that was sent to me July twenty-fourth, I believe, and it's from DPI. And so essentially, uh, what DPI did is they brought in and they did a audit of some of our COVID- nineteen monies to make sure that they were spent correctly. So I just wanted to provide this from the board that we are in compliance and the related expenses tested. You know, they didn't do a full, you know, it was just taking some individual ones and looking, kind of like a spot check, but the ones they, uh, tested, incurred, uh, were approved and everything looked good. And I just wanted to make sure that you had this on file.
Thank you.
Any questions for this?
Any board members have any questions about the, uh, site visit report?
Great job by Mr. Dutton at the finance office and the leadership team.
Thank you.
I was just gonna note that, you know, it just said there were no, there were no issues found, but, um, just as Mr. Lewis has said, I just really appreciate the detail that our finance department has put in on that to make sure that we are using all of our funds appropriately. So thank you. Um, next, we have the ASBO certificate audit for twenty-twenty-three.
So what you have here is the ASBO is Association of School Business Officials, and, um, what, they're an independent agency that audits our finances. And so every year, we have it audited and they, um, they certify and tell us how we do. And, you know, it's a multi-page document, but, um, we had an excellent audit through them. They said our business practices are sound, our spending looks good, and I just wanted to make sure that the, uh, board had a copy of that as well. If you have any questions on that, I'd be glad to, uh, I'd be glad to answer them best I can. I won't read it verbatim there.
Any board member comment?
Have we received that in years past? I just don't remember.
Yes, sir, we have. We, we do receive it in years past, and that's my fault if I wouldn't bring it to the board. Uh, but we have in the past several years. Um, there's actually a little plaque we have up in the office that certifies us every year. Give us a little sticker for it, but, um, it's something, uh, we've done before I've got, been here.
This is looking at things like, um, how in compliance you are with, uh, federal and state monies. Uh, does it take a look at local monies?
It takes a look at actually all of them. It lo, it looks at, I'm gonna pull this. Slide. It really what it does is, it looks at your fin, the way I understand it is, and what I've read and everything, is it looks at your, a lot of it is your financial reporting to make sure that you have honest, fair, clear financial reporting, that you know your reports, you know, there's gonna be error here and there, but are, are sound. And as far as the way your spending practices are, you're spending your monies within the way the law allows at the different levels. So that's a big part of it. It's not gonna tell you, you have to spend this dollar on this and this dollar on that, but it's just saying you have sound spending and reporting practices.
So that you haven't hidden any money, that you've complied with the law?
That you're transparent.
And the time that you're supposed to spend it and spent it where it's allocated and, and the different places that you have the option to spend.
That is correct. That's the way I understand it, Mr. Lewis.
And I'll just congratulate Mr. Dutton, the finance office, and the leadership team again. Great job.
Thank you.
Any other board member comment? If no other comments, I'll move on to superintendent comment.
So I'm gonna keep my comments short and sweet. Um, as far as looking at the weather, I know we spoke about that earlier. Um, I'm gonna look into making a call about what we should do. I work with, um, emergency management. I work with, uh, our maintenance department and Mr. Benton, because I know, um, we're gonna have some opportunities while that weather comes through, uh, for his crew. And just to make sure that we make a, uh, the quickest as we can based on the most, uh, available information, uh, whether or not we will, uh, attend school, uh, any day next week or fall next week. Uh, but we do have coming up, I'm gonna get my little. So we look forward to the start of school whenever that may occur, um, but next, uh, September is the Labor Day holiday. And, um, again, I hope everyone had a good summer. It is coming to an end. It, uh, it went quick, but I'll be honest, I'm ready to get back to it. I'm ready to see the kids again and, um, you know, get back into the daily grind. Um, we've been working real hard over the summer to put things in place to help further, uh, help our kids excel in class, uh, adding rigor and relevance, you're gonna hear that a lot, uh, to our instruction. And, uh, my teams worked very hard, very hard at making sure that everything's in place and what looks like is gonna be the, um, a smooth start to the school year without taking any kind of elements of, uh, acts of God, you know, into, uh, into account for that. But, um, thank you and, uh, yield my time.
Thank you. Uh, I'll start down on your, Mr. Lewis, with board member comment?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll keep it quick. Um, welcome back, everyone. Um, I'm also glad the school's starting back. Uh, I might have some work at home days now. I have not had those. Um, the, grateful for the finance office, Mr. Dutton and his team, the leadership team, Mr. Benton. Um, I, I think you all do a fantastic job, uh, and it's recognized by independent audits and independent agencies. You have a very tough job of, of pinching pennies. Um, I want to thank the commissioner board for, for giving us some additional teacher supplement money, um, going to open house today and, um, speaking with teachers throughout the year. We have to have high-quality teachers in the classroom to move our students. Um, that is a big difference, uh, in my opinion, and I think that that's proven. Um, so I, I thank them for that, and I thank them for, for recognizing the importance of having those teachers. Um, and, and I'm, I'm very grateful for the system, and, uh, we have a lot of good things going. There's a lot of bright spots. Uh, we also have a lot of opportunity. We're, we're way behind, and, and we have a facilities committee meeting with the commissioners coming up on, on August the thirtieth. Buildings don't solve everything. We're way behind in local funding. Uh, we don't have enough flexibility with our state funding. Uh, but I hope that the two boards can begin to work together, uh, and we can find ways to, um, meet some of the, the itemizations that you saw on that budget request, because it, it's direly needed. Uh, when I looked, um, uh, for my niece at some of the surrounding systems coming out of Florida, she's taking physics and AP classes and an, and an IB curriculum there in Florida, and we just don't have that in Stanley County. Um, so to go to your top universities, your top programs, um, you've gotta look over in the Piedmont Union area. Um, you've gotta go to Cabarrus. Uh, it is here, you can go to Greystone. Uh, we just don't have that, nor do we have a lot of our, our trade routes. Uh, we've got the trade facility going up at the community college. I, I hope that, um, our, our commissioner board and our, our county and our taxpayers just begin to recognize the importance of public education and giving access, um, to everyone, uh, and, and showing that, um, our respect through the funding of our requests. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson.
Well, I hope everybody, uh, welcome back to everybody, and I hope everybody had a really good summer. Um, we're gonna start school soon, and I hope everyone has a wonderful, wonderful school year. Uh, we need the best education we can for our students. Thank you.
Mr. Sorenson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lost my place in my notes here. It, it happens when you get older.
It's all right.
Start off with, it's, it is an exciting ti, uh, time of the year. It's been a few years now. I still remember what it's like to, to go to open house and see these kids that are, you know, be showing up pretty soon. I've lost my notes, I'm just gonna wing it. But, um, it's an exciting time of year. And I went to South Stanley Middle and South Stanley High Schools' open house, and it was just a really uplifting thing to see all the kids. This huge crowd showed up at both events. To see the teachers and the positive energy they were bringing to the, to the, to the schools. And I'm excited for what we got going on. We got some good news coming down the pike that Mr. Plummer's gonna share with us once this, uh, DPI gets done grooming test scores and stuff. Inside sources, in other words, I cheated and looked ahead a little bit, our, our elementary schools are doing great. I mean, they're doing a lot better than they were as far as recovering from COVID. COVID is still an issue, but they're recovering. Our middle and high schools are doing better too, but there's still some spots we've gotta work at. We're getting there, but we need better than bottom ten percent in the state local funding. That's where we are. We're basically at bottom ten percent in the state funding. And at the end of the day, we get these, my colleagues up here and I, we get constant emails and phone calls, "Why we, why don't we have this? Why don't we have that?" We don't have the money. It's, it's a simple matter of where a, a community's concerns or where their priorities are is where they allocate resources. And frankly, I consider a hundred and fifth out of a hundred and seventeen, which is where we were last year, pathetic. Our county commission owns that. Based on what I'm seeing from surrounding counties and other counties of equivalent size, we're gonna fall below that. Other counties realize that that's the funding that's disappearing. They're, they're, they're picking it up. They're picking up some of those, the, you know, some of that slack. Stanley County's just like, "We're just gonna let it go. We're not too worried about it. Bottom ten percent for our kids is good enough." So, I mean, I'm excited about where we are academically, but I'm, I'm very much frightened about where we're heading financially, because you can't maintain these things without paying people. And I, I do appreciate the, uh, the commissioners coming up with that one percent, well, sort of, coming up with the one percent supplement increase. We're still miles behind everybody around us, all the counties around us. You ask people to do an impossible job, you need to pay them. And the state sets our pay scale, the county sets our supplement. We're just not getting it done in Stanley County.
Ms. Gibson?
Certainly, um, it is an exciting time of the year. Um, I know that I was, had taken grandchildren, school shopping and all, and it's always fun to watch the excitement on their face with new things. And, you know, I just think about new beginnings, um, for the teachers and students and everybody. So certainly, um, I hope everyone has a, has a wonderful school year, and that's all of our employees. And I look out here and I, I see those of you here, and, um, thank you for all that you do. I could call each one of you individually and what your department does, and I know that you have been truly busy all summer and, uh, for what you do. So thank you very much, and Dr. Dennis, thank, thank you. Um, I did want to give a, a shout-out and a thank you to Ms. Kate Loomis of Mission Christmas, um, who had contacted me this year as well as last year. For backpacks that were stuffed and filled with supplies for Stanley County school students and teachers, um, Kate and her nonprofit contributed one hundred five backpacks filled, um, to elementary students, sixty backpacks filled to middle school, eighty-five backpacks filled to our high schools, and seventy-five backpacks filled to Stanley County school teachers. Um, thank you, Dr. Dennis, um, Dr. Carla Murray, uh, Ms. Debbie Rose, and assisting Ms. Kate Loomis in this mission, Christmas nonprofit endeavor that she does every year. Thank you. That's all I have.
Ms. Whitaker?
I hate to be repetitive, um, but I did want to just thank Ms. Hedrick. Um, she is our new human resource director. She came in at the busiest time that she possibly could have, and she hit the ground running. And I just thank you for all the work that you and your department, um, has done and are continuing to do. Um, facility maintenance, Mr. Benton, I see you hiding back there behind the column. Um, I know his staff has worked extremely hard this summer. Um, probably harder than they've worked in a long time trying to get things ready for our students. Um, and so I appreciate you and your staff. Please relay that to them. Um, to our principals and our office staff and our custodians who worked at our schools all summer long to try to get things ready for a new year. We thank you for everything that you did this summer. And to our teachers who have been working the last couple of days, and hopefully school will start sometime, if not this week, next. Um, but we thank you for all that you do too, and I just wish all of you, um, just took, just a great school year.
Dr. Lefler?
Everybody's ready to get started. I'm sure the, half the kids are happy to come back and half of them aren't. But I know all the parents are happy for them to come back, so it'll be an exciting time for parents also. We've had a lot of improvements in our curriculum. It, it started in our elementary school last year, and we've added some things for our middle school and high schools. And, and it seems like it's really making a difference. And that's very important, because what we as a board are trying to do is to make things better every day and every, every year for every student i- in our, uh, community. Also, I keep bringing it up, and they're probably tired of hearing it, but our kids are in school only eight hours. They're at home the rest of the time, so it, it's still very important. I heard Mr. Lewis talking today about reading with his kids or, or doing math with them, twenty minutes every night. So keep that up because it's very important, because we gotta keep things going also at home. I am looking forward to the school starting, whether it be Thursday or Monday. And everybody's gonna be working in the schools, the teachers, all the assistants, all the maintenance people, all the bus drivers. And we hope everything's perfect, but it's not gonna be perfect. So there will be some hiccups, and when there are hiccups, give our teachers and bus drivers and everybody a little grace, because everybody's working to do the best they can, and I just hope everybody has a wonderful year.
Thank you. Um, I just have a couple of things I'll add in my comment. Um, I was able to attend, uh, three different open houses this week for, um, several different reasons. But, um, one of the ones I attended was North Stanley High School, 'cause I have a student there, and I happened to notice that our bleachers were done there. So, um, thank you, Mr. Benton. I know that they were concerned about that being done before, um, football season got started. So, um, Debbie's not looking so good for that this weekend. I think they had some planned. But, um, thank you. I know that that was the timeline you guys were pushed hard on. And, um, a lot of other things that Ms. Whitaker alluded to that you guys have been doing over the summer, so I just really appreciate that. And, um, Mr. Plummer, you and your department and the instructional committee, I got to see some books getting delivered and some workbooks. That was exciting. The teachers were excited to start Debbie. Wow, take that back. They were having to tote those heavy boxes. They weren't excited about that. But they were excited about what was in the boxes. Um, but it was good to see those and know that those are gonna be in the hands of some of our elementary students. Um, and they'll have some different resources, so just really appreciate all the hard work. And, um, again, another welcome to Ms. Hedrick. It's nice to have you here. Um, I will just add, uh, with the weather coming, um, I hope all our families stay safe, uh, through this and follow directions given to you by emergency management. And, um, just as Dr. Lefler, uh, said, I hope we have a great start, whether that be Thursday or, um, Monday. So I just wish, um, all of our families the best of getting started back to school, so. Uh, next up on our agenda is the date and time of our next meeting. And please note that, um, that meeting will be Tuesday, September third, twenty-twenty-four, but the location will be Central Elementary School at six fifteen, 'cause this room will be occupied. So we will not be here, but we will be at Central. Um, we have personnel and administration with our personnel report, and Ms. Hedrick.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. I would like to draw your attention to tonight's personnel agenda. Section one is simply for your information, but section two does require your action. This evening, I respectfully request your approval of the August sixth, twenty-twenty-four personnel agenda.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve section two of the August sixth, twenty-twenty-four personnel agenda.
I move to reapprove section two of the personnel agenda, August sixth, twenty-twenty-four.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, that's passed. And now, board members, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion. And the second, all in favor? We are now adjourned.